Well, welcome everyone to Wednesday evening B O C C meeting. I think we just have Savannah, are you kind of leading this or are you doing this? Okay. Welcome Family Promise tonight. Thank you for coming over.
Yeah, if you know Sarah and Jamie are more than welcome to come at the staff table. So Jamie is the office manager there and Sarah is the director. And you guys have some booklets in front of you. You know, the only reason that I'm here is just facilitating this kind of affordable housing discussion. And Jamie had reached out to me or I reached out to her, one of the two. Um, talking about it about a week ago for she had looked into some previous presentations that were done. And I did tell her I could facilitate them coming. Um, and kind of talked to the commissioners about their mission, a little bit of the history about their organization. Um, and then some current needs that they that they would like to talk to the board about. So they gave you a nice little package. Um, you're more than welcome to review and um, they're going to give you a little uh, history. Uh, Dan is a board member here. I'm actually going to swap out with him. He's going to give you some history and talk about their mission statement.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Dan Frye. I'm a a board member of Family Promise here locally and uh, I helped to get the program started here in Calhoun County. Uh, thank you for hearing us tonight. It's a great, it's good that we can have the opportunity to explain Family Promise to to you and kind of share our mission. So I'd like to give a little history. Family Promise began in nineteen eighty-six when a woman from New Jersey thought to organize the churches in her community to address homelessness. The original format was to provide rotational shelter for up to four families or fourteen people for a week at a time at the churches that had the capacity to to house them. The reason they limited the program to fourteen was because they were using a fifteen passenger van to transport the 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 folks from the church, churches to the day center and back each day. And by rotating these among fourteen churches four times a year, they had the families would have a safe place to live for the entire year. The churches that were not able to provide the accommodations to house the families supported in the way of uh, food and volunteerism. This model has grown now to two hundred and five affiliates across forty-four states. They added eight affiliates just last year. We received our five oh one C three status in May of twenty seventeen and began our ministry in August of twenty nineteen. It took two years for us to establish the board, get the commitments from the churches, find a location for our day center, which is just across the street, by the way, hire staff, et cetera. The program has small, a small staff consisting of a full-time director, a case manager and a part-time office manager. It relies on resources that are already available in the community to benefit those that we serve. By utilizing the volunteers, this program has proven to operate at about a third of what other organizations uh, cost to do the similar work. I know we've all seen homeless individuals holding signs at intersections or in tents along our freeways and inner city parks. But for every homeless person that we see, there are many more that we don't see. Parents with young children will do anything to keep their families safe. And they will find a cheap hotel or they'll stay with family or fan friends before they would ask for assistance. Unfortunately, many families left from payday to payday and it doesn't take much to put them in this position of needing help. It could be an illness, pregnancy, loss of job, rise of rent, just a few examples. It's reported that over forty percent of the U S homeless population are family with children. And those are the families that we're focused on serving. I talked with Molly DeBois a couple of years ago. She was the McKinney Vento homeless liaison for the Longview School District. She told me at that time there were over three hundred and fifty children in the longest school district that were considered homeless. And about nearly the same number from Kelso. So it is a huge problem. We vet each of the families coming into our program. And to date, we've successfully housed twenty-four families with sixty-one children. An average of seventy-five days in our, in the program. That includes working through the COVID crisis and with the severe lack of affordable rentals available in our area. We check on these families for a year after they leave the program and to date all have remained housed. So we're pretty proud of that. But by providing both room and board, it allows the families to catch up on their bills, sometimes find a better paying job, save their income and work on whatever else is needed to secure stable housing. We're proud of the statistics, but they are due to cherry picking the families that we feel we can best serve and be successful. The past year has been especially difficult for us. A server of the church has felt uncomfortable housing the families, let alone serving them in light of the virus pandemic. So we decided to house the families instead at the day center. And that has proven to be less disruptive for the families and a blessing for us as well. We no longer need to transport, transport the families each day. There's no longer required box truck to move the beds and all the the clothing from one church to the next. And it's easier on the, on the families. They have a stable room that they get to stay in. Um, we spent much of this last year remodeling the day center so we could accommodate up to four families. We have a nice dining area now. Um, and we're in the process of re-engaging the churches in our area to better understand our new model and to meet the families that they're helping. Uh, with that, I'd like to introduce Sarah and Jamie.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, my name's Jamie Craig and I am the part-time office manager. Um, and I first heard of Family Promise um, around the time Dan was mentioning when they were bringing it to our county. Um, I was uh, at my church and they had brought it to us and I eventually became the coordinator volunteer from my church who um, got the volunteers together and um, made sure where our space was set up for to bring families in um, on our weeks. Um, and then COVID hit and the families actually stayed at my specific church, First Christian for months because no other church would open for them. Um, and then when they went to um, static sheltering at the day center, I eventually became hired on in March of twenty twenty-one and I've been there since. So I've been kind of back um, along with the program for a long time. So um, I just kind of wanted to give you the background to that is, is that um, when we would see the families come into the church, they would have um, like dividers up to separate them in the big, you know, um, fellowship hall. There wasn't really a real space. It was just kind of separated. Um, and I remember just kind of thinking that it was great that they had somewhere warm to sleep at night and food in their bellies and that the kids had a place to play and be safe. But how sad it was that they would eventually have to pick up and move to another spot and unpack their things. And so when I came to work at Family Promise and um, saw where they get their own room and the kids have their own drawers and they have a space to play and it's, it's theirs until they get into their new home. It's been really, um, it's been really great to see the difference. And so we do hope that our volunteers and our churches can come in and really see that um, more in the future and see how, have the difference that it makes for children because homelessness is traumatic. But also when you're homeless and moving even more and more, it can be even more traumatic. So seeing that's been really great.
My turn. Um, I'm Sarah Wallace. I began actually my journey um, here in Calhoun County as an AmeriCorps member. I got the opportunity to serve in Family Promise at a part-time capacity as a case manager assistant. Um, when that ended due to the pandemic, I was um, added on as the full-time case manager. And I just kind of want to tell you a little bit about how the program is unique and structured versus other, maybe other programs in the community. We um, it's very unique, the way that we vet our families and pick them. Um, we want to make sure that the families that we're bringing in are going to be successful and that they are going to get the most out of the program. Um, so we we um, we, we get referrals from anywhere in the county. Um, they can call directly. They can be referred from one of our partner agencies. You know, the Health Department, um, Health and Human Services, E S S, um, CAP, various hospitals. Yeah, Peace Health is a good one. Um, the school district, we work with them a lot. Um, and it kind of starts out just a phone interview, talking to these families, getting to know their background, why they are in the situation they're in. Um, then we bring them in and meet them in person, meet their kids, see how they interact with their children, see how they parent their children. Um, are they employable? Are they housable? Are they able to um, pay market rent at some capacity during the program? If they don't have a job coming in, we help them find their way to a job that would make a family wage. Um, it's sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay, so um, we, we run a background check because we have other families who are in the program. So the safety of the other families and children is, you know, at the highest level. Uh, we do a drug screening upon entry of the program to any of the adults who are in the family. And um, then it's like the intake process begins and it's the intensive case management. We meet with the families on a weekly basis. We guide them through the community, um, set them up for routine and structure and, you know, success for the end of the program. Uh, another part is that we require our families to save seventy percent of their income monthly while they're with us. Um, so that they're able to self-sustain their cost to move out. Um, we set them up with a savings account. We put them through some financial literacy classes and budgeting, um, like structure and um, well, that's like the basis of our case management side of things. Um,
I was just gonna note that um, even though we went from rotational shelter into um, uh, static shelter, our churches, we still rely on them. They bring um, one church every week is in control of our families and they come and they bring their dinner every night. So the, the churches do feed our families still on a regular basis. And then um, some of them, if they're able, do help monetarily monthly. Um, but it's, it's so the families are also able to save their money in their food stamps or whatever they have for their, their groceries. They're able to save that for when they move out as well and get that home-cooked meal. Um, so that was a good part too of it.
Uh, one thing in talking with Jamie about the program, because I didn't know a ton about it, other than Jamie worked there. Um, done some donation stuffs, just, you know, clothing and stuff like that here and there. So I knew a little bit about it. One thing that she mentioned to me that I thought was important to share to the board is, you know, um, she said, you know, we're not a homeless shelter. We're a transitional housing agency. So um, I think that's important to highlight for this presentation because I think your success rate's pretty good and talking about how you're getting these families into longer-term housing solutions. Or is there, is, would you guys want to touch base on that a little bit, what that looks like?
Yeah, I know, I know, like on our answering machine specifically, I say, please note, we are not a homeless walk-in shelter because people will call mostly without children and expect to just come in and get a bed. I'm like, no, no, this is a process. It could take days to weeks to make sure that you're the right fit to come into our program and stay the right amount of days and get into your own home because that's the goal. And Sarah, out of how many families have we had um, had that we've um, was it the twenty families have graduated?
We've housed twenty-five families in our transitional shelter and we, twenty-four of them are still stably housed.
Since two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
Yes. So it's a pretty good success rate and it's because her vetting process is so solid and
Since uh, what, two, since two thousand nineteen? So they were in four years now and they're still stably housed.
Yeah, but that also is when we only had two bedrooms. And as of last month, we're now up to, well, this month we'll have four bedrooms. So those numbers could potentially be higher.
And how many, how many churches help you with this, do you know?
I should definitely know this question. It's twenty-two, it's twenty-seven churches. Um, but they're paired. So there'll be like a main host church and then a smaller church doesn't have a lot of funding or volunteers. And they'll support. So it's two churches together every week. And it's really great because it brings a lot of the um, you know, different denominations together to serve a ministry, so.
So you also mentioned you went from two to four. Um, and I think that's something that you've built into your proposal. Is that correct, how you've expanded? Um, do you want to talk about the proposal that you've included um, to the board at all?
Want me to? Uh, yeah, so we have a proposal here and it's not exact. So, you know, um, we really just wanted to come and, and introduce ourselves. You, I know you see us, we're right across the street. Um, and we wanted to really introduce ourselves and see if, you know, you can help us in the, in the, in the future. Because um, we did, we did just expand because we saw a need. We get so many calls, have to turn it down so many worthy families because we don't have the space. And so um, but with more capacity comes more, you know, um, overhead. Um, and so we really just wanted to come and introduce ourselves and get you guys to know who we were. Um, and if we needed more information and more exacts, we'd be happy to bring that forward. Um, but yeah, you know, um, we did just lose a ju- director. I don't know if we were going to talk about that, but um. And so Sarah's been uh, stepped up from caseworker to director. She's been here a long time. She's doing great. And we would eventually really love to bring on possibly even a part-time caseworker. Cause we're gonna, we're kind of interim, we're working really close with the board. Um, but we have been running the program together really solidly for quite a few years and we make a really good team. And um, so we, we have a lot of ideas that we think we can really do good in this community. And um, just being able to continue our mission is really our goal. And I, 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 one, one thing, the, the money we're asking for, we need new beds for the bedrooms. Just gonna throw that out there, but yeah.
So you mentioned, I think if I caught it correctly, that your construction across the street expanded from two to four beds.
Yeah.
And what, what's your ultimate goal for this next phase? Are you gonna stay with just the four for a while?
We actually have five rooms that we can utilize now. We had to lower some windows. It's a really old building. We finally got them done. So we have five rooms that we can potentially use. Um, we just feel that at this time with the limited staff that we have, that it would be unfair and unjust to the families. If we took in that many people and weren't able to, you know, support them like we have in the past with the other families. The uh, obviously the intensiveness of the case management would be less and less. So building up to five, maybe even more families as we, as we can fit is the goal.
So um, for a full-time case manager, what's typically the capacity? How many families can you comfortably work with? Twenty, twenty-five or much smaller than that?
If, if I were just case managing, I could probably do twenty-five families. Yeah.
Only if you are only ca- yeah, like only working like, yeah.
And um, when um, you were doing the rotational basis, you were. And I, I just ima- I can just imagine the coordination was a real challenge. Everybody has their own rules and um, getting from place to place, you have to adjust. How many um, beds or how many families were you able to handle at once when you were doing the rotational thing?
So they were at four families, but it was a fourteen-person max. Because when the churches initially um, came on to help, that was the agreement that they, you know, could take in.
So it could have been uh, two families that equaled fourteen or four families that were ten.
And did you get funding a year or so ago from a hundred women? Is that a program that you got help from?
I think that money went to our remodel.
We also, we also got a hundred men when they were around as well, I think the first year.
Seem to remember a check going through the checkbook.
That's probably where you recognize it from.
Yeah. So, so I know, I, 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 it's, it's a, it's a neat project. It's not one that is um, designed necessarily to address the, the homeless that are in the media all the time. Because typically those are single folks that have significant amount of drug.
Oh, yeah.
Substance use problems. Families are almost by definition a little bit more stable, but they've had a bad run, run of luck. And they just need a, a hand up a little bit. So I wasn't clear though on your plans. You have five rooms now. Are you, is there capacity for more growth across the street at the old Presbyterian church? Or, or you need a different location if you were to expand beyond that?
We would need a different location.
Okay, okay, no.
I mean, yeah, technically. Technically.
Churches don't typically have the kind of bathrooms that families need.
We actually have really, really good setup and we would love to invite you guys to come over and check it out anytime. Cause I think you'd be impressed of what the work Dan and his team's done, but yeah. Um, Sarah, did you want to touch on what he was saying with the, like you said?
The population that we serve.
Oh, yeah.
We, we kind of require um, that your sobriety, your mental health, all of that be balanced or, you know, in check, so to speak. Because we don't, we don't have the in-house, you know, clinically, we're not set up to um, provide the support that families um, at that level would need. But we, you know, we partner with different mental health services and agencies to keep the longevity of their, you know, mental health well. But in-house, you know, prior to coming in, we definitely screen for mental health and substance use disorder so that they're stable coming in.
Yep. I was gonna say Sarah works with a couple of um, um, rental places in Calitz County. And they trust her and they trust her um, judgment on our families and they know that she, they know that they've lived with us. Um, and that we vouch for them. And so Sarah works with these um, rentals to get our families. And I think that that's a really great um, relationship that we have.
Do, do you participate in the coordinated entry program to help identify needs and link up with resources?
So we're not linked with them, but we have our families um, register with coordinated entry. We, we're on our way there. We're just not in the HMIS stuff yet.
We're in the loop still though, but yeah. Arn?
The reason I was fiddling with this is because it ties to my hearing aids.
Oh.
And I had to crank it up a little bit, so I. That I did miss a couple of things. Uh, there were twenty-four families and twenty-five families. Would you mind just quickly going over that again? What those families? What the count?
The families that we serve that are housed, the families we've housed.
Right. So you say this was since twenty?
Nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. In twenty nineteen, you processed twenty-five families?
Since then, yes. We've housed them.
Housed them and twenty-four of them?
Are still housed.
Are still housed.
So one.
So these are all graduates, if you will, that you're, that you're mentioning. And so that's uh, twenty-four over twenty-five success rate is what you're saying? Wh- what did happen with the, with the odd person? She's just in a categoric way, just, they failed to meet something.
It was a single dad who was not ready to take on the responsibilities that he kind of jumped into and he just.
We tried.
And when you say they've been, the twenty-four families have been successfully graduated. That's, so the oldest uh, families have been on their own for three and a half years or so. And uh, how do you define that? Are they, are they getting support from other agencies or are they?
Some of the families may have a housing voucher or they work and pay their own rent. Um, but part of the program as well is like learning the community that you live in and how to utilize the resources that are available if you need them.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't misunderstand what I'm gonna say, but it is really interesting that. If I graduate from this program and I go into another program. This program says it was a success and this program, it says, look at all the clients I have. And it's like double dipping or something like that. In other words, I, I really do look for a. Long-term solution, otherwise we're just seemingly aiding the problem. As opposed to improving situation. And uh, um. I do like that you have uh, let me say restrictions. You're really trying to get, you, you have to because you can't put four families together that tightly and not expect to brawl. If you just pick them at random, true? Okay, so how do you feel about the people that you, that you turn away? How do you deal with them?
We, we try, we try not to ever just turn anybody away. I really do try to find a solution to their problem and at least refer them to an agency that can help. The more families who are in shelter, the more particular we have to be about who's coming in. Um, because it's a pretty unique setting where you really need to be able to live amongst.
So as a case manager, your job is partly consumed by having to interview people and understand. And aside from the ones already in the program.
Yes, that's a.
So I usually take the initial information. And uh, you know, if they don't have, you'd be surprised how many people call for housing and shelter when they don't even have kids. So I have to say, oh, well, we only house, no, families with children.
Do you make any distinction between? People who planned poorly or let's say they, they live paycheck to paycheck. They can afford to have one kid maybe, but they've got four. And, and so they're really in tough straits. Do, do you separate that group? From groups that have abused their, their body with drugs and all that kind of stuff?
I don't, I don't know that that.
I think the, yeah, I think the bottom line is um, yeah, well, they, yeah, what was the question?
I just think it. Abusing your body, having, as long as you have children and you can fit within the criteria that we've set. I think that we would just, case by case, we would have to go through who has the most need and who would gain the most success from the program at that point.
Okay, that twenty-fifth person you mentioned, that was a father with a child?
Yes.
Okay, so Family Promise is just let's take care of the kids.
Yes.
And that distinguishes you substantially from almost everything, every other program around.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't take any, any uh, single adults.
Why would I not go to Community House as opposed to go to Family Promise?
If you were homeless.
If I were a homeless family person.
I'm, I'm not too sure on house, Community House specifically runs, but I know that there are some. Um, if you have more than three children, you can't shelter in one room there. Um, if you're unmarried, you can't shelter in one room there. You can be unmarried at Family Promise and you can have as many kids as we can fit. Um, those are just some of the like obvious reasons. We also are transitional housing. We, we say that you have ninety to a hundred and twenty days coming in. So when you come in, we set a timeline of goals, how we can achieve them if it's possible. So that way we, we have this map of success, so to speak. Obviously, life happens and, and things can change. But um, as far as I understand with someone at Community House, they put mental health and um, services first. So you have to maneuver working around their set um, program specifics or meetings that they. And I'm not too familiar with how they, they operate, but.
Uh, I'm a little sensitive to the definition of children being homeless. There was a time when I spent with, with my grandparents. And uh, I would have been called homeless by today's standards. And I certainly would not have been happy to have been taken away from my grand, grandparents or counted as. Unfortunate because there is value in, in family. And uh, I never want to interfere with a family. Sometimes you'd like to because you know they're dysfunctional. But you cross that line and all kinds of bad things can happen.
We're all about keeping the families together.
All right, I don't think I have any other question. I mean, this is my appreciation for people who do this, that's for sure. There, there's, when I look down through this and listen to you, there's. My view, a lot of things to like. You know, it's, it's, looks like a pretty rigorous interview process, phone interview than a live interview. Where you want to see that they're employable, they're housable, they can pay market rent. Basically what that tells me, you're looking for people that are ready to get out of the situation you're in and they want to succeed. So you have somebody you can work with. And then you work, you actually haven't saved seventy percent?
She's very stern about that.
Of, of their income monthly.
So what we have.
Get prepared to do that?
So what you do is, um, well, we have that conversation when you first come in, because when you look into people's pockets, it gets a little bit personal. Um, but we have you pay your bills off the top, storage, cell phone, car insurance, if you have it, whatever that may be. And then you take the seventy-thirty split and you put it in a savings. And then we, we try to really provide any basic needs that they have while they're in shelter so that they can save that amount.
So they can save that. So while there are going to be times where they get a home and they probably do have some assistance elsewhere. Your goal is to really to make themselves sufficient, it looks like to me.
If, if you have to save your money in order to maintain the program, it just feel like it's really helped people stay on track. Um, to be responsible to something.
And I like the, the follow-up. It's only a, a year, but we see a lot of places that do no follow-up.
More like a month.
I actually still talk to all of our families on a monthly basis, if not more.
Our very first graduate just came and helped us at a, at an event last week, so.
A few of them work in the community. Um, they're now, you know, working at the tribe or substance use counselors or whatever they may be.
And I went ahead and added um, from our newsletter, a story of one of our recent graduates from last year, her and her family. Um, they were a very large family and they would not have been able to be sheltered anywhere else in the county, in the county because of the size of their family. And we see that a lot. And with our remodel, we were just able to um, open a bigger enough bedroom to where a large family like this would have been able to. Be housed even more so than when we had them.
Part of the only comment I would make on funding requests and, and I, and it's a, a thing of mine. My colleagues can tell you what, what they think on their own, but. I, if you need something from us, I'm, I, I'm pretty open. If we want to build out so we have two more bedrooms or we need some equipment. But if you come to me and tell me I need you to pay for a body for year after year, I struggle with that.
You mean salary?
Yeah.
Okay, for sure. Yeah. You would like, you would probably like a more detailed.
Well.
Breakdown of what we would spend it on.
And I'm just talking my personal preference. I like to help you build your thing, but I don't want to pay operations year after year after year.
For sure. Yeah.
We, we just had a really rough year. We usually do really well with fundraising, grant writing. We sustain pretty well that way. But we're, we just had a super rough year and.
Yeah, and I'm not so worried about this. I mean, we get, we get requests for much more.
And I think one of the, one of the interesting challenges we have is that. We can identify programs that assist homeless folks. Trying to address all the, the, the whole variety of different causes. But one of the key factors is the importance of casework that goes along.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of replacing the parenting that obviously didn't, didn't work when the people were growing up. And, 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 you know, learning how to function as a family and as a, as a household. And uh, so, I mean, you know, just about every program. That we've been involved with has involved case management expenses and, and. Then. It's a, a little difficult because those costs are steady year after year and keep increasing. Our funding doesn't, it varies. And in fact, the funding for housing, portable uh, homes is declining. Because it's a function of how many new permits are issued, not, not really permits, but the, the, the revenue for, from new construction. And with the higher interest rates, that's taken the skids, so.
Yeah.
We, so that's, if you hear some reluctance, it's, we don't want to get trapped with having these ongoing staffing needs. When our revenue sources are declining and, and.
No, I agree.
Kind of facing that right now, I think, with those funds. There are some leftover, but.
Yeah.
We probably should have come to you last year before we started the remodel. But we, we uh, canvassed the area. We got donations to cover the costs of our expansion. And we're very blessed by the monies that came in and a lot of volunteer labor to do the work. So we, we're able to do quite a bit with not a lot. So we were able to do quite a bit with not a lot.
And I think, you know, we did have different director in the last year and different ideas. And going forward, I think that we have been, worked together for three years and we know the people we work with. We know the people in community. We know the churches and we have a lot of ideas on how going forward over the next year. So really making ourselves sustainable in the community with our, with our resources. We just need a little help getting there and sustaining us until we can get our ideas out in action, sort of thing. Not to say we're asking for staffing, but.
Yeah. Don't get me wrong. I'm not telling you I have a heartburn on this. I'm just trying to give you a, if, as we keep looking at different things, that's kind of.
For sure.
And, and it's, it's you, it's anybody else that sits, sits across and asks it. I look at it that way.
Absolutely.
I've got a little bit of a different question. You, you mentioned that the program, I think you mentioned it too, that the program originated as this concept of rotating between churches. And you're in 44, the group is in 44 different states. Has the, have the struggles over the rotation chaos been common? I mean, are, are churches still doing the rotational thing or have they all really begun to kind of figure out? Constant moving is not the path of stable housing.
The idea, I think originally was to meet the homeless face to face, find out they're just normal people. They're not that bad. You don't have to be afraid of them. It could have been you instead of this person. Had your kid got sick and medical bills, whatever caused you to get there. But yeah, since the pandemic, all across the United States, we understand that they've changed their model. Some are still with the rotation model, but many more have gone to stable, one, one location.
Did you have more to add to that, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
I just, for us, rotational model was great, but this is even better. And there was, there was issues, you know, on either side. Every Family Promise across the nation has either adapted to a static shelter or done both, because the results of this type of shelter model are just, you know, it's less time, less. The volunteerism aspect was taken away with COVID. The, the volunteers that we would have from the congregations were mainly elderly. So for that first year, year and a half, nobody wanted to come and do anything in fear of getting sick or, and then we kind of forgot how to get back that way for a little while and utilizing what we have now. So it's about a third less volunteers than we were working with in the beginning as well.
That's one of our main aims right now going forward is we need to recommunicate with the churches. To let them know we still exist, we're still doing good work and we need their support. Yeah. Your model actually reminds me quite a bit of Habitat where you're, you're pretty much your, I'd, I'd say you're more coworkers with these people trying to teach them how to be successful than you are a caseworker, telling them to do this and that and whatnot.
Educating them on how to use the resources that are in the community that they're going to live in, once again, so that they can stay stable, you know?
Yeah. And I, I do want to point out too, that we get a lot of calls, or Sarah gets a lot of calls from Community House or Emergency Support Shelter. As you know, those are the only real two other shelters in the county. And when they're, they're, right, well, there's more, but, but anyway, those two are major ones when they're, because they have time limits or, you know, they have to eventually exit families. They call us and Sarah has worked before on, because, you know, they help them get past the trauma or the mental health or the sobriety or whatever it may be. And then they get to the end of their visits there and we're kind of that, again, transitional. They'll come to us and we have that rapport with those agencies to take those families in. And then, then once everything else is taken care of and their life, start working towards the housing. I think, I think I said that right. Yeah.
So Mr. Chairman, assuming that we don't have a legal issue, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the funding. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposal for the $40,000 financial assistance from Calhoun County to Family Promise. Have a motion? Any questions, comments?
Okay.
You gotta come up to the mic, because we're online.
Dan, give up your chair.
So I just had a quick question about, you said that the Community House couldn't serve large families and you guys serve each family in one room? So you don't have to follow the RCWs that everyone else has to follow because you're a church? Is that?
It's, it's so our, but our, but our bedroom is, it's very large.
Right, so.
It's.
We have one room that serve is, it's like three combined. So we can serve a larger number of people in that room.
But it doesn't have to follow the RCWs?
I think because it's a church.
Because of the church mention.
I don't know the answer to that question.
I was just wondering safety wise. Okay.
But I think yes.
So we will look for that answer.
Okay. Any other questions?
So our step is probably refer it to Gina to make sure it fits the, yeah, the plan and, and the legalities.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna touch base on that. I'm sorry. I did go ahead and let David Berger from the PA's office know we were meeting on this tonight as well as Gina James. So they are aware. They weren't able to attend today, but they're going to review it as soon as they get in. So we should have maybe a better answer, but I, I mean, I would think going forward would be fine and when, we'll touch base on that next week then at a workshop as well if we need to.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Well, not next week, but the week after.
Yeah.
You're right.
Or the weekend with that.
So we can vote on this and then if it passes, David, we're good and Gina. Okay. I don't see any other hands or?
And this would be out of the document recording fees and.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Passes. Thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
For hearing us. Appreciate it.
And again, anytime you want to come check us out, we're just across the street.
Yeah. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn.